So I'll go ahead, it's six o'clock, I'll go ahead and open up the meeting with the pledge of allegiance if we could, I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need first the approval of the agenda, any additions, deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Ross. We really don't need a second for small boards, but I'm sorry, I'm trying to overcome that. Any comment or discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Teacher, staff, community comments, anyone want to address the board on anything? And just raise your hand or speak up if you're on the phone, I noticed we do have a couple on the phone. Okay, Tina's here, hi Tina.
Hello.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go on with finance, I know we've got some printouts. Is Louis on board?
Louis is not with us, I can text him if you need him.
I don't think so, has anybody got any questions on the financial printouts that you received?
I think I did, but I wanna, I have to find it again.
Okay.
I actually had, had a couple. There was one for athletics technology, is that the scoreboard?
Um, which, where are you looking, if I could, Jeff?
It's on the, it's on the third sheet. Um, the second sheet, actually. It's, it's athletics technology. Athletic tech supplies. One thousand nine hundred ninety-eight.
I see it now.
It's from Amazon.
Okay.
Is that the scoreboard for the building, or?
Mike, I think I saw Mike Roll signed in.
Yep.
Yes, that I believe was for the camera that we use to um, do all of our live video streaming for our basketball that we own as a school.
Awesome.
Okay. I just, I just was wondering what that was.
Yep, we own the camera now, so we can do all kinds of live streaming events at school.
And we, that can be, that can be used for other, other events, is that what you just said, Mike?
Any event we have at school that you want to go live, we have the capability to do that now.
Awesome, thank you. And, and then the other one was the, the playground supplies?
Yeah.
Is that the new playground for the little kids? Is that what that is?
Sarah, are you aware which one they, it is?
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Thank you, Jim.
Alright, that's the only questions I had, thank you.
Thank you, Tina, did you find it? I can't hear you, I see your lips moving.
I was saying yes, but I was trying to find the window where I could unmute myself. There's so many windows open, I, I miss having the physical paper in front of me, so it makes it a lot easier. But, um, I just had a quick question on the expenditures, the SU assessment, is that just Rutland Town's expenditures, or is that for SU as a whole, like our share of it?
It would be, usually it's partially our share of things, but if there's anything specific to Rutland Town, then that would be included in it.
I was just curious that we were thirty thousand over budget for the repair and maintenance, it looks like? I was just, is that just due to COVID things?
Yes, yeah, mostly the stuff that we needed to do for COVID, yeah.
I think, I just. We don't have Louis on, but is that something with the money we get from the feds that we could, or state that we could charge off, that's probably a Louis question.
Lynette, I do believe that was the plan, but Louis, I texted him, I'll wait to hear back from him though, to confirm that.
Okay.
I think that was all my question.
Okay, I know most of the COVID stuff Louis has been trying to track and throughout the supervisory union and get us reimbursement from either the federal or the state. Um, I think there's a couple different funds that we try to get reimbursed from.
Um, actually, I had just a general question, when does the fiscal year change over, is it between June thirtieth and July first?
Right, July first, the new one starts.
Because we still are supposed to get a lot of money from the state, do they, like, is that still expected?
It is still expected, sometimes the years even close before we actually receive it. But they're updated, usually the, what is in there and what is expected is what we'll get. Um, I can't remember ever being really greatly dis- surprised on that portion of not getting the money we expect. Um, that's usually, we receive it, but the state's the state, we get it when we get it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Chris, we can move on if you want, and then if Louis pops in, we'll just ask him that for sure.
Okay, I know he was at a baseball game for his, for his kid tonight, so.
Okay, well, it, it really doesn't matter, um, he can, we can get back, I know he's really on top of those things and tries to get our reimbursement as much as he can. Um, so I'm sure he's on top of it. Um, but if he does pop in.
Sure, and if he doesn't pop in, Tina, I'll make sure he can email you response as well for that, okay?
Alright, thanks.
Sure.
Moving on to the consent agenda, everyone got copies of director's orders warrants in their emails, I did go ahead and approve it, I did have a question just on, it sometimes amazes me, I guess, where our students go to high school. Um, I realize it doesn't matter, they all get the same amount of money. Um, especially the ones that are outside our region, um, they get the state average, but um, I was surprised to see we had one that was up near the Canadian border. Um, so I did question that, and I was reassured that, um, that is being double checked, or it has been checked um, for accuracy. Um, uh, it's hard to keep up with the students, it's easy to look at a student's name and know that they, well geez, I graduated two years ago. It's all the new people coming in that we don't recognize the name, so, um, those are the ones that are harder to track, but I know the supervisory union has been always really, really good, but I've just never seen one up near, I think it was Allburger or something, up near the border, um, I was a little surprised.
It was Ennisburg, Lynette.
Okay, yeah, that one surprised me, I just had, yeah. God knows, he could be living with a grandparent and going to high school up there.
Lynn, is there, is there a, a policy on that, that we can look at or something to, to see what, where we have to pay our tuition to, or is that?
We have to, it's, it's a state law, um, we have no high school, designated high school, I should say, we don't have one of our own, and we don't have one that is designated.
Right.
So therefore, um, any high schoolers can go to whatever high school they wish. Um, religious institutions are still being discussed. But, um, no, they can basically go anywhere, and we have to pay um, at the state average, and I think that's for most of them, except for the local ones.
So, so like, sorry, I want to ask this question, so like, if, if kids go wherever they go, we have to pay whatever that tuition is, or there's a one flat rate that we pay for each student?
There's one flat rate that we pay for, as long as the, the state of Vermont make sure that they're accredited high school. Um, so they have, you're right, they have to apply by all rules and regs. Um, and there is a state average, the state gives us that, um, they receive.
Okay, great, thank you for answering that.
You're welcome. Okay, on director's orders, um, can I have a motion to approve the director's orders warrants?
I make a motion to approve them.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have the minutes of March eighth. And they were, I don't remember the meeting talking this much, but, um, they're right, they're pretty copious. Anyone see any changes, deletions, additions? I didn't catch any, but.
I didn't see anything.
Me either.
On the, on the, um, school, for the school board, mine was a three-year seat, was Billy's a two-year seat or a three-year seat?
Two.
This is a two.
Two years, yeah, so there's a typo there.
And that was corrected at the bottom, Jeff.
Well, it was?
I brought that up at the meeting, and if you keep reading down, it was corrected, because I thought that too when I was rereading it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I caught it at the end.
Okay, alright. I missed that line, sorry.
Well, like I said, there's a lot of pages there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes approval?
Aye.
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 Okay, that'll pass unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Lynette, I have just a few things to kind of go through tonight. Uh, so each year the GRCSU is asked to nominate two staff members to be recognized as outstanding teachers in the state of Vermont. Uh, traditionally, this, uh, you know, recognition is held a ceremony at the University of Vermont. Uh, it's a nice ceremony, but obviously with COVID this year, they had to shift and move to virtual. I just want to, um, the Catholic GRCSU, just congratulate our two teachers, Christina Kerber from Polton High School and Courtney Ellett from Proctor Elementary School. Uh, I just want to, you know, I've been saying this at all the board meetings, just congratulate them, just, and it's a well-deserved honor, so I just wanted to make mention of that. Uh, this past week, we had our last and final COVID nineteen surveillance testing. Uh, this is the final surveillance testing for us, uh, due to large number of educators in the state being vaccinated. Uh, and a- as a result of our, our test, we had no positive results, uh, which was a good sign, but as I said at every board meeting, it is just a snapshot of that day at that time. Um, but it just, it did provide us with some important feedback, so uh, if there are any plans to bring surveillance testing back, we will let you know, but as of right now, uh, they're looking to shift, uh, shift that, uh, the resources away onto something else, so. Uh, it, in addition, uh, as you're all aware, that's the, all GRCSU staff members were eligible to receive their vaccines. Uh, the two initial dates were March fifteenth and March twenty-second, uh, those individuals who received their vaccinations on March fifteenth uh, were scheduled for a second shot, and, uh, I know the state had initially promised, or told us that they would do their best to try to steer clear of uh, scheduling vaccinations during school day, but I think it was just, you know, whenever they could get the vaccines and just around the timing, the second vaccination was scheduled for April fifth. Uh, it did cause a large problem for us with regards to staffing across the GRCSU. Uh, and as you're aware of, as a result, we, we did make this decision to shift uh, all schools to remote on April fifth. And Rutland Town, and talking with Debbie and Sarah, uh, there were some staffing issues obvious, uh, you know, as a result of the side effects, the impact of, uh, the vaccine, so, uh, Rutland Town went to remote, and Pro sixty's as well. Uh, hopefully, like I said, the vaccines are, you know, we're past that now, but I know there's been some discussion about what vaccines may look like next year in the fall, we don't have any information on that as a vet, but, uh, we'll, if I, when we get that, I'll let you know, and bring it up probably during the summer. Uh, the Sback in the Vermont science assessment, which is the VTSA, uh, the window this year has been extended from April first through the end of the year. Uh, so it's a little bit longer window, obviously taking into consideration uh, what's going on this year, and just to try to bring certain students back from, uh, remote to test. Um, so Debbie and Sarah have been working with the staff and the sheriffs on scheduling this, I do believe they've been sent out information to families with regards to what that schedule will look like, as well as to, uh, families who have, you know, their children who are remote, and a plan to bring them back in, so, but, uh, just a point of information, the Sback is, uh, for ELA, it's grades, uh, in math, they're grades three through nine, artificially tested, and the Vermont science assessment is, are grades five and eight, as well as eleven, but that doesn't impact Rutland Town. Over the past few weeks, we have been working on the AOE Education Recovery Plan, uh, you may have heard of it, this is something which is mandated, all districts and supervisory unions are expected to uh, provide this plan, uh, the plan is going to assist our schools, our districts, and our SU in charting a path as what education is going to look like this spring, next year, and the following years as well. Uh, you know, it's, it's going to assist our students with social, emotional learning, their academics, as well as ensuring that all students have an equitable access to a high-quality education. Currently, we are finishing up with phase one, phase one is the initial needs assessment phase of the recovery plan. Uh, during this, you know, phase, we are collecting a lot of data. Uh, the data that will allow us to, you know, make a good decision in terms of interpreting areas of, you know, student strengths, uh, student concerns, areas of weaknesses, or needs, uh, develop some preliminary ideas as to how best to address these student needs, uh, and support all our learners, as well as determine whether or not we will need state assistance in these areas. As I said before, there are, uh, you know, we talk about the social, emotional, but there are four buckets that we call that we're looking to kind of break down the plan into, that's the social, emotional, learning, mental health and wellbeing, student engagement, truancy, and academic success. Um, the, uh, once we've finished up with phase one, which will be submitting that by the end of this week, we'll begin working on phase two, and phase two really is kind of like the action plan, this is where we start developing strategies, uh, in terms of what this will look like, obviously on a school basis, uh, district basis, and SU basis, we'll start identifying resources, uh, and developing the steps we're going to take, uh, over the course of the spring, throughout the next year to, to implement and evaluate, uh, the impact of these steps. Uh, these, as we move through this process, we will be sharing monthly updates with the board. Um, but if, obviously if there, you know, you want more information or see where we're at, feel free to reach out to myself or to Lisa Madison. Uh, finally, I'll say finally, actually three more things, but, uh, as part of the recovery plan, uh, we took a look at the spring, and as we looked at those four buckets, you know, these, uh, social, emotional, the mental health, wellbeing, academic success, and student engagements, and the decision was made as, uh, other supervisory unions to, to shift back to five days of in-person learning. And we know that this was, uh, it's very strong opinions and feelings with, you know, on all sides of this, but and, and look at the plan, we felt it was best to bring our kids back in for a fifth day. Uh, I, you know, there'll be, the fifth day will be the Wednesday, we'll shift into a half, half-day in-person. We did look at a two o'clock day, but, uh, we still have that remote option available for families. And so we felt that, uh, as we've been doing all year, uh, that, uh, additional planning time for staff to plan, to collaborate, you know, develop the lessons for both synchronous and asynchronous learning, we felt was still appropriate. Um, but like I said, we'll be good to get our kids back in in five days. Uh, we do thank all the families and the staff for their understanding and patience, but like I said, as we start to kind of work our way through the end of the year and start preparing for next year. In addition, we've all heard of Governor Scott's Vermont Forward Plan. Uh, and the reason why I bring this up is because many families have been reaching out to myself, and I'm sure to Debbie and Sarah, uh, as they look at, you know, steps one, steps two, and step three, as well as July fourth, what that means for end of the year and graduation. As of right now, we're still waiting further guidance from the state in terms of what end-of-year activities and graduations may look like. But we know in looking at step three, uh, which is June first, uh, that in, uh, an outdoor graduation ceremony will be possible, uh, that we can have, I do believe up to nine hundred individuals on site for that, uh, obviously we're still with a mask and physical, physical distancing will be, you know, required with outside of family pods, but Sarah and Debbie could talk a little bit more, uh, about that and what that may look like. Um, there were some other, you know, guidance in the updated guidance, the strong and healthy starts. Uh, but it's more in terms of just looking at the health screens and, you know, shifting away from that and uh, moving more towards, uh, just, you know, uh, family-based decisions as opposed to school-based. Alright, a draft copy of the GRCSU calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year is included in your packets, it is also uh, to be discussed later in the board meeting. And then, uh, finally, uh, school meals will provide over April break. We will also be looking to continue school meals for all interested families over, uh, summer as well, similar to what we did last year, so when we have more information on that, Debbie and Sarah will be providing that for the families. Uh, thank you, are there any questions?
Chris, I just have one now, summer break meals, now is that still being picked up by the state of Vermont?
Yes, yes, uh, they, it was announced a while back that, uh, federal funding will be available for that. So we're, we're happy to provide it to our, to any interested family member.
Okay, does anybody else on the board have any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Co-principals report.
Hi, everyone. Um, I want to start off with, um, it's not in our principals' report, we were notified on April eighth that one of our eighth graders, Erin Geisler, uh, won second place in her region for the Hilding, uh, twenty twenty-one Lincoln Essay, there were over a hundred and twenty essays submitted by eighth graders from around the state, so she won four hundred dollars. Um, we are unable to, um, publicize it at this time, just because usually they have a wonderful celebration. Um, in person, they're doing something virtual this year, and she has to submit a video, um, of her reading her essay, and then once that's posted on their YouTube site, then we can get a press release out, but I just wanted to thank and congratulate Erin Geisler on that achievement, it's great, we've had almost every year, or the last couple of years, I have to say, we've had a Rutland Town student that's um, been in like the top five, which is wonderful. So congratulations to Erin, and since Debbie may only have one more co-principals' report, I'm gonna let her read this one.
Alright, thank you. So we have our fourth graders, we're lucky enough to learn about, um, some electrical circuitry with some help from Veep, they got some materials and, uh, teachers, uh, got some instruction, and then they worked with the students on that, and they really enjoyed it. Um, we are having a reading competition in grades K through five using our Lexia software, and students, uh, complete certificates, and so far, they've completed three hundred and seventy-nine of those certificates in grades K to five. And we actually have five students that have completed the whole program, and now are moving up to the sixth through eighth program. So we're constantly moving students up in that, um, area, so the kids are having fun watching the graphs on the monitor weekly to see how they're doing and compared to other grades. Um, we had a few families move back to remote learning for spring break because of the positive cases, but we expect them to return after, and we already have had some of them come back in the first couple of days. Um, we've been working on completing interviews and reference checks for our open positions for next year. Um, we had really good attendance for our parent, teacher, and student-led conferences, we had ninety-one percent of our students' families attend those co- remote conferences. And, uh, for some families, that might be some, one of the positives that we take out of this, that we might be able to continue that for some families who need it, um, moving forward. Um, our report cards are going to be mailed home this week for K through four, and middle school parents can look at their students', um, their grades online. And we want to congratulate James Kamuta, he's a first grader in Mrs. Prozo's classroom, he was recognized as a student of the month for the month of March. And we've been preparing for those Sback tests, we have arranged for remote students to be tested separately on Wednesday afternoons, we have them coming in, they've been noted, families have been notified by mail, and they will each receive a personal phone call from me tomorrow. So that, uh, just to remind them that that's happening. Um, lastly, we have from Building Matters, we have an update, there's a whole big report there from Kelly. Um, he's, uh, actually coaching a softball game momentarily, but he's going to join us as soon as he can. And I don't know, Chris, if we'd be able to bump that back to a later, a little later to new business, so he can answer your questions about that report. Very thorough report, I should say. Is that okay with you, Lynette?
That's fine, we'll just, we'll wait until he's available.
Okay.
And then I did, I didn't know if we could have micro talk at this time, Lynette, if that's okay, just a little bit about athletics and what we're thinking for graduation?
Awesome.
Mike?
I'm here, I'm here, good evening all, how are you? Um, so, we have been talking extensively and trying to plan graduation, um, as normal as can be, and obviously following all the guidelines. Uh, we've had some parent support, um, we're looking at doing an outdoor graduation, uh, out back of the school. Um, once we have a date for graduation, we can then go ahead and reserve the tent, in case it's inclement weather. The goal is to practice social distancing with all the guidelines. If everything stays according to plan, that's kind of what we're gonna do, we would, we would like to do, and make it as normal as we have in the past, we have a very rich tradition of our graduation ceremony here at school. Um, and we would like to continue with that, obviously following all the guidelines, so as soon as we know the date of graduation, then we can quickly reserve the tent, have it put up, and then do all of our festivities that we normally do right out back, it'll be a great setting. Um, and of course, the tent jinxed it, because I can't remember a day in twenty years that it's rained on graduation, so hopefully that will not happen to us, does anybody have any questions as far as, that's what we're planning middle school-wise?
The only question I have, Mike, would be on, because of the distancing problem, unless you've got a really huge tent, um, as far as seating goes, I'm just worried about my, um, our older parents or grandparents that may attend. Um, standing would be, it, it would be a little difficult for them, I'm just not sure how you're planning that.
Well, we're planning, it's kind of like bring your own chair, you're going to a little uh, event, like you're going to Hart in the Park, um, the graduates will be under the tent, it's big enough, it's covering the basketball court out back, so we'll be able to fit the forty kids, plus or forty, whatever the number is, underneath that tent, and then the plan is to just have everybody spread out. We'll have speaker system and all of that, so people can hear, it'll be essentially like if it's in the gym. Um, you know, you'll be, there's a certain distance away that you are, but it's more of a bring your own chair kind of thing, and we'll, we'll have law and order there, so that it, uh, it's not a free-for-all um, in that regard. So that's kind of our plan, and once again, this is new, uh, so we'll be going through some hiccups as we go, and those are great questions um, to ask, you know, we might be able to have a drop-off for the elderly, um, grandparents, uh, and then they can move their car back out to the front. So that's, those are great suggestions.
And the only other thing you have now mentioned, I know the social, the distancing, what about masks, are they required?
Masks are required, to the best of my knowledge, they will be required. Um, I don't know, unless Chris knows different with the family pod scenario. Uh, I, that would be up to whatever you guys set.
So Mike, I think that's, uh, part of the guidance that we're waiting on, but in, in looking at the Vermont Forward Plan, step three still has masks and physical distancing are required, um, when you move to step four, July fourth, that's when it says encouraged. Um, but that wouldn't take place for our graduation, so as of right now, masks are be worn by all attendees. Uh, and I said, and we'll wait on further guidance from the state.
Okay, I just know with vaccinations, um, a lot of people are under the assumption, even though they've had both their shots or passed the two-week waiting period, that they don't have to wear masks, I just want to make sure that the residents know that you have to have the masks, uh, you'll have to bear it, uh, it's not comfortable. God bless the kids, they don't seem to mind, but, um, we just want to make it the best graduation for the eighth graders that we can, so I prefer not, you know, have to get in some kind of verbal altercation with someone for not wearing a mask.
Well, we'll have, we'll have signs up, and we'll have our resource officer there, we'll have people there to help, you know, with questions, and I think, like you said, most people understand it. The kids have been actually fantastic about it, um, from my perspective, all year, and, and I'm actually very excited that we can potentially do it outside, I always thought it would be kind of cool to do outside. It's just we have a natural, a beautiful spot out back where it lends itself to that, so I mean, Jeff, how many people do we normally pack in normally, you would know, Jeff, how many people normally pack in the building?
You know, there's usually anywhere from four to five hundred people that go for graduation, I mean,
Yeah. Yeah.
One of, one of my thoughts I just had, Mike, is a lot of, you know, and I'm sure you guys have thought about this. A lot of colleges and that kind of stuff are only allowing like parents and grandparents to come. So do you limit the amount of people a student can have come to a, come?
We have had that conversation and we will continue to have that conversation, and that's a great conversation, but we have already talked about that as far as limits. We're gonna wait to see how everything unfolds. It's gonna be really fluid. We hope to give them more than enough notice, um, because we want people to enjoy it. We have a beautiful space out back, so we have plenty of room to host
Oh, sure, yeah.
People. So you might not get bird's eye view, but you're there and you get the, you know, you get the gist of it and you can have your picture afterwards with your significant other and your family. So yeah.
Don't be doing any rain, rain dances.
I'm not, I, I told you, I jinxed it as soon as we brought a tent. It hasn't rained in twenty years, if I can remember correctly.
No, it's usually hot and muggy.
It is always hot and muggy. Now it's just gonna be, anyway. We'll just keep good thoughts, positive thoughts. So that's our plan. And please, if you have any questions, I am, by no means, I, I don't know. I just gotta let somebody ask.
I do have just one more. Are we gonna livestream it?
Oh, yes, of course we are.
Well, I just want people to know, so that they don't necessarily have to be in the backyard, that they could, uh, uh, actually see it also.
Without a doubt. That's why we purchased what we did, and I'm so glad that we didn't, you know, the huddle part was great, but I'm so glad we did what we did, because we can as long as we are in range and we are Wi-Fi, we kind of already tested it, we can do anything livestream around our building. And that camera, if you, if you saw those games, the camera and the quality was pretty intense, so.
It was. It was.
That we will definitely livestream that. We're gonna livestream our sports too, so.
I know. I, and I have watched a multitude of them between basketball, hockey. Um, it just makes it a little harder trying to get snapshots, um, while you're but hey, I did pretty good. Uh, you know, and not as good as if you were in the stands, but, um, yeah, it, it really was wonderful. It, it's mostly, you know, at least you get to watch them, so.
Yes.
And, and it is wonderful. Any other discussions with Mike?
Yeah, Lynette, uh, last month, uh, I, I think Tina, you had a question about, uh, transportation for athletics, particularly around the $5,000. And we said that we would bring this back up at this, uh, at this meeting. So I think, well, Mike's here, if we could and I started meaning to put you on the spot there, Tina, but.
Oh, I, I thought that I was looking at the report wrong in that the $5,000 was actually for field trips.
Correct.
I think, so it was kind of answered for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mike, did you want, you want to talk about the MOUs with the other schools?
Yeah, sure. So, um, just, you know, an MOU is a memorandum of understanding the VPA requires when if you're not able to field a team or you have students that are interested in a sport that you, your school does not currently offer. Um, you write one of those up and you do what's best for the student and allow them to play the sport that they choose. We usually have this in the spring. Um, is our biggest time that we we do this. So we have those arrangements. For example, we're ho- we're taking in lacrosse kids. This year, we had eight kids from our school sign up. Um, we have four from Christ the King, two from Barstone, one from Otter Valley. And just, you know, for boys lacrosse, you need ten on the field to play. So now we have a full-fielded team. They follow all the guidelines. I also sent a, uh, boiler, a blank uh, MOU to you that you can look at, uh, Sarah, and Debbie can forward you that, just to see what it's involved. Um, so for boys lacrosse, that's working well for us. Uh, for girls lacrosse, we started with twelve from our school. Um, twelve girls play at a time for girls lacrosse, completely different, go figure. Um, and so we would have no subs. I got a, uh, phone call the other day that Rutland City, lo and behold, has four kids in their middle school lacrosse program. So those four girls are coming to play on our team, uh, starting, they started tonight. And then we have one girl from Barstone. So that's great. We also have, uh, our baseball team for the first time, and I can't even remember. We have enough kids, so we are putting together a baseball team for our middle school. Last year, and, or not last year, but years before, we would have an agreement with Barstone, Christ the King, and we had, they called it Barking Town, um, because all three towns were involved in providing a middle school team. And then last but not least, softball. Um, we're at, uh, a matter of number of ten right now, and we have one student from, uh, Rutland Area Christian School who is playing to help make our team complete. So we're able to offer four, uh, programs for our athletes for the spring, which is fantastic. They need it beyond belief. Um, and so that's what an MOU is, and we, we have those anytime that we are sharing um, facilities. For example, also, we have three kids that are gonna be running track for Rutland Middle School. So it goes both ways a lot of times. Um, it's just not one way. It does go both ways. So just if you hear that, see that, we do have a plan in place. If for some reason, uh, we have too many, then we just do not accept um, the kids from the other town. Is basically how it goes. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, Mike, uh, question, uh, there's no money exchanged though, right?
No, there's no money. It, I, I want to make this perfectly clear. It, with them joining us, there's no fee to them. But everything we have is already paid for. To play a game of lacrosse, we still have to pay the refs, whether or not they join our team or not. We still have to line the fields for the game, whether they join our team or not. So there's no, there's no expense that I've incurred to have them be on our team. I want everybody to clearly understand that. The, the great part is, is that we're able to offer these sports to our kids and then to other kids that in our area that would be shut out. And it's just, it's a great opportunity. The VPA allows that. And, um, we just follow their guidance and their rules. So, good question, Jeff. Yes, there's no money.
Okay, um, bringing up the, just because you're still on, Mike, I signed the, um, agreement with the men's league to use the town school property, again, the field. Um, there is a thousand dollars that is given to the Rutland Town, um, school for that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and they've always given us money. It just usually goes, I'm not sure where. But it goes in the budget somewhere. But, um, so I just wanted to let you know that the agreement has been reached, um, and I reiterated to him the rules, regulations again, and especially with COVID, that he has to go through the health officer to ensure that everything is proper. So I just wanted to let you know in case you see him up there.
Yep, Jason's a good guy. He is from Rutland Town. His family is from Rutland Town. Um, and he does a really nice job. Obviously, last year, there were a couple of bumps, but that was at the beginning of everything. So yep, we work together very well. Um, so I'm glad he's back on board.
Yep.
Um, that's great. He used to pay me $10,000, and now he only pays you a thousand. Something's wrong there. I'm just, I'm kidding. Kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I think we're gonna have to look back and see what happened, uh, what you did with that ten, but anyways.
Yeah, I'm kidding. Well, that was rectified, rectified. Stop kidding. It wasn't, so.
He did change the name of the group this year for, um, to honor his father, who he lost this past year with COVID. Um, so it's just got a different, um, title to the team, but it's the same team.
Yep, and that's great. Yep, he's a good man. He does a nice job.
Yeah, he is. Any questions on any of what you've just heard?
I have a question. I put my hand up, but nobody saw it.
Oh, now I see it. Now you took it down.
Um, so I know that the basketball court at the school is in great disrepair, and I know that's on a, a list to be done at some point when we have the money. But my other question is, when are we going to put the hoops back up at Northwood so that the kids can start playing outside?
I ask that question to JP every single time I see him. He is our town health officer, and he is the one who's in control of whether or not they go back up. Um, I would call him and ask him. Um, we, you know, I ask him every time and he looks and he says, "Not yet." And so I know that other towns have them up, but ours are not, and they will not go, and I hear it all the time, Tina. Um, as soon as he says that, they will be up there within a couple of hours. So I would just ask him. It doesn't hurt. I mean, that's, that's part of his job. And, uh, I asked him last Tuesday, and he said, "Not yet," and I said, "Okay." I'll ask him next Tuesday.
And I will ask him when I see him.
Uh, who is that, health officer?
It's not a job, I apologize.
Okay, that's what I thought. I was just.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have used the last name. I apologize.
No, it's. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks. Principals, do you have anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, when you were saying all the students were coming back, does that mean that there is no more remote students?
No.
That everybody has to?
No, the students that were, have been fully remote, a few of them are starting to come back, but not all of them. And I don't expect, I don't expect they all will, but there are some that will come back before the end of the year.
We've kept that open, Jeff, to the end of this year, at least. I don't think, Chris, if we've made a decision on next year yet, correct?
Uh, there's no finality, but as of right now, we will not be offering a remote option next year. We'll be back to in-person learning, uh, as we normally would, so.
Okay.
I, I know that's a little tougher on the teachers. That's why I was asking to see
Yep.
when that was hot, gonna happen.
All right. Moving on, contract recommendations. And you have got a handout that was given to you. Um, um, I guess somebody needs to talk about, um, Sarah, I see you're on the list. Uh, who is Eric?
Yeah, so, um, Eric Gross has joined us this evening. Um, we are recommending him, um, to be the new assistant principal of Rutland Town School. Um, a little bit about Eric. He grew up in Vermont, um, in Berry, and attended Berry Town and Spalding. He went to Champlain College, University of Vermont, and Castleton University before moving to Pennsylvania for a few years, um, and then eventually came back to Vermont, um, married with two children. Um, he's in his eighth year of teaching English at high school and college level. Um, he has four degrees, uh, an associate's in law enforcement, a bachelor's degree in business, a master's degree in education, and a second master's in educational leadership. Um, he, um, he taught middle school English, high school English, and then again, college. Um, he enjoys a lot of fitness, hiking, biking, fishing, farming. Um, and he's really excited to come to Rutland Town.
Welcome, Eric. And, and if everybody here is up on the screen, if you've got your, um, computer up. Eric, did you want to say anything?
Just thank you very much for having me today. I really appreciate it. It's great to be here. Thank you.
Can't wait to meet you in person. Um, hopefully, that'll also change towards the end of the school year here. Um, and we can have, go back in person. Especially when the kids are no longer in the school. Um, we wouldn't be putting them at risk, so um, it's a lot easier to have an in-person meeting than it is the Zoom. I really can't stand this, but welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so on your handout. Now, Sarah and Eric, um, I guess I'll have to talk to Chris at some point. Uh, so did you need anything voted on tonight, Chris?
Uh, I think, uh, we may have to, uh, go into executive session to discuss salaries and then, and come out, uh, some salaries tonight. I have some numbers for, uh, for the board to discuss.
Okay, yep. And I noticed extracurriculars on here. I did reach out to each of the board members and they approved those. Um, so we can just verbally approve them after executive session also. All right, so we'll hold off on this until executive session. Vacancies. I see we have one resignation.
Do, do we have another recommended contract in here?
Yes.
It's, yes, it's listed. It's listed under, uh, your name and Eric's name, Sarah, for our guidance counselor position.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't read them all off, because we gotta go to an executive session, so.
Gotcha, sorry.
Okay. So we have a notice of resignation that we received, um, from Janet Caserino. Janet was not with us this year. She had taken a leave of absence. Um, and now, um, is requesting to resign at the end of this school year. Um, does anybody have any motion on that?
I make a motion to accept Janet's resignation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, vacancies, I didn't see any, so I assume we're okay on our vacancies?
Yes.
And, and we don't have a leave request, correct?
Correct. That should not be on there.
Okay. I don't have, um, anything for the chairs' reports. Um, just, I'm just so proud of our school and teachers, um, the community as a general. As far as the COVID goes, um, daily I hear about acquaintances that have COVID, are still getting COVID as of yesterday. Um, even though the vaccinations, Rutland County has been very, very good um, at signing up for them, and everybody has their own choice, and I understand them all, um, about not feeling like they want them yet. I know they're looking at Pfizer, Moderna people getting boosters in the fall, which right now they're talking about. I think it's a combination COVID booster and flu. So instead of just going to get a flu and then go get a COVID, it'll be the same shot, uh, from what I hear. But, um, but I think that's it. Of course, Johnson &amp; Johnson is still up in the air. Um, you know, so I know a lot of people are still waiting for that to reopen. Um, I don't know. Personally, I'd just say go get the other one and, and get it over with. They're talking about students, of course, sixteen and above can sign up now. They are talking about lowering that to Pfizer anyways, is talking about lowering that to age twelve and above before school starts. Um, so next year could look very, very different, um, for us. It is, there's the CDC and everyone starts learning more and more about how the vaccines really interact, um, then we can maybe get new guidance. I know that people that have had their shots and passed the two-week can get together, not have to wear masks. Um, but I know even at, uh, town hall, um, the police department, we have all had our shots, both shots since February. Um, when we're in the office together, we will not wear the mask. When we're outside the office, we wear them. Um, just to be on the safe side, we don't want to infect anybody. I don't believe the girls in the office have had their shots yet, maybe one. Um, but we still have outsiders coming in to do research, so we always, you know, we're very diligent about wearing our mask when we step out of the office. Um, so hopefully, we'll see how it washes out, but I really am kind of optimistic about next year. I know myself personally, tomorrow morning at six o'clock, I'm on my way to Maine to see my daughter, granddaughter. I haven't seen him in a year and a half. And I am just thrilled to pieces to be able to go visit. Um, so, you know, things are opening up, um, and getting a little more optimistic. Anybody else have anything to say before we move in? I really don't have anything for the chairs' report tonight. Oh, you guys are so quiet. Okay, we'll move on to policies. Tonight would be the approval of these policies, correct, Chris?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. In your packet, uh, the second reading of, uh, Title One, which is quite lengthy. It's, I think, a three or four-part, um, document. This is, again, like I said, the second reading. I don't believe we've ever had any questions on any of them from the public or from different board members throughout the supervisory union. The second one is D-five, the alcohol and drug-free workplace. The third one tonight is D's and David's six. It's the drug and alcohol testing for tra- transportation personnel. And we have, the last one is F-five, which is students' drug and alcohol. Does anyone have any questions on those policies, changes? Hearing none, if I could have a motion, um, we could do them separately, or perhaps we can just read the titles of the H-five, D-Five, D-Six, and F-Five for approval.
I make a motion to pass H-Five, D-Five, D-Six, and F-Five.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion on the policies? Any discussion on the policies? All in favor?
I.
Aye.
I had a discussion. I just had a question about the Title One policy.
Yes.
Um on, I think it was, I'm just trying to find it. Um page three, it says it's a sample school district parental involvement compact. Is that what we are basing ours on, or is it just a sample? I wasn't really quite clear why that was in there.
So my understanding is uh the VSBA gives like recommended policies, and so what you will do is you'll just kind of copy and paste. But what people do when they copy and paste them, they don't delete certain items, and I think this is just a remnant of that. So as we update this policy, put it in, we can delete that um from there, but cause this is.
Good catch, all through the committee, all through first reading, and Tina finds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I just, on, on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm sorry. I, I just had a lot to say. It was a very long um.
It is, that one is.
And I just, I like the idea of it. I just was wondering like how it's really going to be implemented. I just I'm trying to picture what that would look like and if it's really worth making a policy about it at this point until we know how we could actually make it happen.
But it, it is required by the state for us to have this policy in place. And what uh we can do for the next board meeting, if you want, Tina, is Lisa Madison and myself can present as terms of what this looks like, uh cause it should be present in our handbooks. It really is just basically more, there's, you know, creating uh engagement between the, the school and, and parents and families. And there are certain steps for this, and we're actually building a plan out as required by the state, so we can bring an update in terms, and the policy basically mandates that we have to do that.
I, I think it's great. It's just, um I, I would like to see it in motion, I guess, cause I don't feel like we've done that yet. So is this a new policy completely, or is this something that we've had and?
We've had this in place for a while now, so.
Okay.
Right. And I think that was one of the things as we were going through policies and as we went through the audit with the state, there are things that, except that we were not doing uh the school and just that we, we should be doing. That, that's what we're currently revising and revamping. So we can kind of bring what this will look like um at Rutland Town, if you'd like, to the next board meeting, Tina.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so you want to hold off on that? Was that your request, Tina?
Um I, this is only a first reading anyway, right?
No. This is the second reading.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay with it. Um I, I mean, if it doesn't matter to hold it off until we see it, you know, what their plan is in action, I think that's fine. And plus it shouldn't, I don't think it should have any errors on it either for us to finally approve it.
Okay, we can do that, Chris. Um Billy, you made a motion for all of them. Um do you want to revise that for and have weight on the H five?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass D five, D six, and F five.
Thank you. Um we can wait on that. Um this one took us a long time in committee. Um the actual first draft that came from the state um was even more cumber, cumbersome. So um yeah, if you want to bring that back, Chris, at the next meeting with Lisa.
Sure. And I, I just want to, I mean, it is a bit of a formality, like this is something that's mandated by the state that we have to have in place for our school. So we will, you know, we have to, like tomorrow, we still will continue working with the Title One part. We have to have this in place. So that's what we're working with. So um we'll bring it back to the next month to be formally approved by the board. That's fine. But like I said, it's one that's, it's a working document. It's like, it's like uh sexual harassment, discrimination. Uh those are things which, as we can go through it, we still have to do these things that we have to do. So just wanted to.
Okay.
About that.
No, no problem. Isn't, is there any problem waiting for fa, formal approval next meeting?
No, that's fine. Cause we'll be approving just basically just what's going to go in our manual, the actual document is what. Um but the spirit, it will, will still be, we have to do.
Okay.
The intent behind us.
I'm looking at Tina and don't see a hand up. I've been really neglecting you tonight. Um anything else?
No, thanks.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, none appro, and none opposed. Old business? I don't think we have anything. Um. Uh we, we really haven't started a whole lot because we just went through the reorganization, so we haven't had time. Um new business, um. Okay, we talked about, well, I would like to bring the transportation athletic discussion back up. Nothing that has to be done right away, Chris, um but before we start doing the budget next year, at least have a discussion on what it may look like cost-wise if we did have transportation for our athletic teams. Um uh because it's been so long now, I can't remember what the costs were. Graduation, um we had gone through that and will, I'm sure, get an update next meeting. The GURCSU calendar, um very colorful, by the way. Um I really don't have anything. Anybody have any comments on the calendar?
I'll make a comment.
Sure.
Um I, I like it. Um I like that they've switched to Wednesdays as the um the early dismissal day. I, I think it'll be a good transition for the kids, and uh maybe it worked well for the teachers too. Um and then I also liked how, and I don't know if um we're just following Rutland City, or we're trying to guess what the state um kind of mandated calendar will be about the um four-day weekend in October, instead of having that just one in-service day. I thought it was nice that we're recognizing the Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um and I think that was all my comments.
So and Tina, you, you're right. Stafford basically sets like a regional calendar that Rutland City, GRCSU, uh Slate Valley, Mill River, RNSU, and you know, the Bennington, Arlington area that we've kind of followed. So you, you will see a lot of similarities. Uh but there was a lot of discussion around the Indigenous Peoples' Day um that, that weekend. So, thanks.
Um also, when we send this out to parents, is it going to um have it noted which are the half-days? Cause I didn't see that. I know that it says parent-teacher conferences, but for new um like kindergarten parents and, you know, new people to our school, I think it would be helpful just to make sure that that's noted somewhere on there.
I'll speak with Christine McGinnis tomorrow and we'll make that. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Okay. The next meeting will be May tenth, um and it will be a Zoom meeting. Okay, executive session. May have a motion to go in executive session for personnel.
I'll make the motion to go into.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
About the other three of you?
Yeah, I read them, but I'll say aye.
Yeah, aye.
I'm sitting here listening for four, and I didn't hear them. Okay, um you got this, Chris, so that's everybody uh.